Committee of the whole meeting of the board of directors of the school district for the city of Allentown for today, December seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. The board welcomes and invites public comment. You may address the board on agenda and or non-agenda items. This first opportunity for comment is at the beginning of the meeting and is limited to agenda items only. Comments cards must be received by the start of the meeting, which is now. We will not be receiving public cards once the meeting begins. Okay, I'll read it after that then. Okay. For board policy, any person may address the board in accordance with the procedures and limitations of the policy, either on issues presented and resolution being considered or other matters affecting the administration management or operation of the district. Remarks of a personal nature directed against any individual be ruled out of order. So also, prior to tonight's meeting on the informational executive session, an informational executive session was held to discuss the status of Allentown School District Foundation, negotiations with paraprofessionals, custodial, and Act Ninety-three, a component program of the district and confidence in matters pertaining to students and personnel. The board also consulted with charter school council regarding legal issues surrounding the conduct of the ongoing charter school proceedings. If you choose to address the board, please fill out a comment card and hand it to the board secretary, Mr. Simonson. Comments cards are located in a podium near the door. Once recognized, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and kindly limit your remarks to three minutes. Mr. Dr. Burks, do you have any superintendent remarks?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Phoebe, or Ms. Harris. Good evening, everyone. Everyone who's still here. Good evening, public, my team. Thank you so much. Of course, our sensational students. Tonight, we will begin the process of reviewing and proving our Allentown School District's policies as it relates to finances, as well as as a direct result of some of the recommendations of an ESRS audit. This is going to be a very lengthy process to review these policies, but they are necessary so that we can help create greater efficiencies as it relates to our financial operations. You will hear the first readings of six policies, including the G A S B Statement Thirty-four, federal fiscal compliance, travel reimbursement for federal programs, records management, conflict of interest will be removed tonight, and fraud. Additionally, there will be a budget presentation. Mr. Fazio and myself will present for discussion only our budget process, which will include the communications and other matters at our communications plan. Yes, thank you, Ms. Phoebe.
Thank you. At this time, we are taking public comments on agenda items. Do we have any?
Is this the finance meeting or the policy meeting?
Finance.
Finance. So Ms. Sarah Jane Brace has a comment on the budget.
Sorry, I was ahead of myself. Sorry about that.
Hi, Ms. Sarah Jane. Good evening. Sarah Jane Brace, Old Allentown, one eight one oh two. Good evening, Board of Directors. I would like to congratulate the newly sworn in directors and the newly elected president and vice president. I look forward to this team of nine directors leading our district over the next two years. Tonight, you're about to see a budget presentation that shows you will be allowed to raise taxes eight point three percent. I know you aren't voting on a budget tonight, but the months ahead are the time to actually hash out numbers. Having these discussions this early is amazing, so kudos to this administration. While no one likes to raise taxes, it is a necessity in this district. Our schools are in need of repairs, supplies, and staff. Our children are suffering because of a lack of resources. While you don't need to raise taxes the full amount, a small amount can make a huge difference. Let me give you an example from my personal tax bill. I live in a moderate row home in Old Allentown, and this year my tax bill was around eighteen hundred dollars. My child attends school one hundred and eighty days out of the year. That means our bill breaks down to ten dollars a day for him to attend school. What most people don't think about is that our tax bill decreases because of gaming funds, which means this year we're paying about five dollars for our child to get an education. I'm here to tell you, I'd pay double my bill if it meant our kids could have everything they needed in a classroom. I'd pay that if it meant teachers didn't need to fund basic supplies out of their pockets. I'd pay that if it meant all of our sports teams, bands, cheerleaders, and other after-school activities were able to receive new uniforms. I'd pay that if it meant ASD was once again a district that was beating the odds and a model for every other district in this Commonwealth. And we can be that model. I know we can. Please do not look at eight point three percent and panic. Please ask questions. Ask for examples of what that increase actually equates to for the actual household. Look at the gaming funds and see how they lower the tax bills. Please do not make decisions based on what the city is doing with taxes. They do not fund our schools, and therefore, the district needs to look inward and figure out how to properly fund everything. The district has made great strides, and I'm proud to be an ASD parent and teacher. Please keep us moving forward. Thank you.
Okay, so let's get to the agenda. We have one item, Mr. Fazio. It's not on agenda item?
Your card is a non-agenda card.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
It's non-agenda.
Okay, so that's afterwards.
Yes.
That's, mhm.
I apologize again. Policy or? Policy.
No, 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 this is, we're doing finance.
Oh.
We're doing finance. You told me finance first, y'all.
Yeah, sorry. Sorry, I messed up. It is finance. I apologize.
Tonight, thank you. Policy, right?
Finance.
Finance. Okay, so Dr. Burks and I are gonna double team the board and present a first look at the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five budget. And we have just a few slides, but I'm gonna introduce Dr. Burks.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Fazio.
So as a quick overview, good evening, School Board Directors, again, the public. As an organization, we are making decisions that are based on our mission, vision, and our current core values. An overview of the presentation tonight will include who we are as an organization, our budget goals, a little bit about the strategic planning process, a timeline and communications plan to share with the public, our revenue, cost drivers, the historical Act One index, and the next steps. And so this presentation is for discussion only of this evening. We know that other slide just talked about who we are, our mission, our vision, our foundation. To date, we have approximately sixteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-five students. Here's a demographic makeup of our students. As you can see there, seventy-three percent of our students identify as Hispanic or Latino, twelve point nine percent as black or African-American, seven point five percent white, five point four percent two or more races, and another very small percentage, not even identified as Asian, and then say very slithered they are American Indian. So two point, and as it relates to economically disadvantaged, seventy-seven point six percent. We have seventeen point six percent of our students English learners, seventeen point nine percent are special education, but zero point nine percent of our students are in foster care, and two point nine percent of our students are experiencing homelessness. Here's the breakdown of our staff. Currently, we have two thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine employees. Seventy-three percent of them identify as being white, one percent Asian, seventeen percent Hispanic or Latino, or nine percent black or African-American. If you look here, of those two thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine employees, fifty-seven percent are teachers, thirteen percent are are part-time, five percent administrators, and twenty-five percent are support staff. And people who fall into support staff category could be paraprofessionals, clerical, and those types of positions. We are funding this organization based on our goals, which are aligned with our current district's comprehensive plan, which we are required to create one by the Pennsylvania Department of Education. And these are the goals within that plan at a high level. We're going to increase student academic reading and math performance, chronic absence rates, graduation rates, increasing language acquisition for our English language learners, and aligning our priorities as they emerge out of our strategic planning process. We want to ensure that our decision-making is based on all our multiple stakeholders as the next level of work in the chapter that we create in reimagining our district together. So we want it, we are starting the strategic planning process early. And as I mentioned in previous presentations, this will be a six-month engagement so that we will still have some additional resources as it relates to our ESRS dollars and some of our other grant funding to make the key decisions this type, this part of the academic year. We've developed a timeline and communications plan because we want to be fully transparent with the public as well as our school board as the actions that we will take. You see here, we presented to the board and it passed on October twenty-sixth, the Act One opt-out resolution. We had, we hosted and explained our student-based budgeting process with our school leaders on November thirtieth. And each school is, each school leader is going to create their school budget. And as I've mentioned previously, we are powering our school leaders to be chief executive officers of their schools. And so we're using a student-based budgeting model. So we're using data to inform the way we allocate resources at each school as well as by department. Tonight, we are presenting for budget discussion to the School Board of Directors here in our finance committee meeting. And you see there, between December two thousand and twenty-three and February two thousand and twenty-four, we will host meetings by each school. School leader will come in and present their, basically a SWOT analysis of their schools, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats to the centralized administration. We will review their staffing models at each school. We will use data to, their discipline as well as their academic performance data to determine what type of staffing needs or additional resources that each school will need. Each school is required to share and work with their school-level leadership teams as well as their organized parent groups and their decision-making. So they will have influence before it comes to, back to the central office, their proposed budget for the two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And each school leader will be required to have their parent group president or whatever advisory body they have to date to sign off that they fully understand how their school is being funded, that they were a part of the decision-making process. Throughout, you'll see throughout the process, we will have multiple presentations during the finance committee meeting as well as full board meetings until we get to June. So I'll let you read that there for a moment. If you see throughout the process, there's no action, we're just keeping you informed as well as the public informed. We also will conduct a community forum, which the general public will be able to weigh in on the budget process and our decision-making. This year, we have to make some crucial decisions because we will be facing the Exer cliff, and we are funding will wind down. And as of September two thousand and twenty-four, we will not be able to expend any of the ESRS resources. Our aim is to have a special board meeting to finalize the budget to present to the School Board of Directors for approval for June thirteenth. That budget is due to the required by state law and statute to be completed by June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. Once the budget is completed, as we've promised last year, and we have, so if you go to our website, we did create a budget book in which all of our schools and departments are listed within that budget book and how they're funded. How many staff do they have? How many resources do they have for athletics and various things? We are also going to this year have schools have a lot more autonomy over some of this decision-making around as it relates to athletics and some of the supplies that they need. We will centrally purchase the items because we want to make sure we get the best rates and we follow the procurement laws, but schools will have more decision-making authority.
President.
We believe in strength-based leadership around here, so Mr. Fazio is going to get into more of the details around the finances. The revenue will, we're gonna talk about the tax revenue, flat state subsidy as adjusted for the twenty-three, twenty-four increase, a flat federal funding. We'll talk about ESRS in this discussion and planning for the exhaustion of ESRS funding after the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year.
Thank you, Dr. Burks. Thank you for the gift of your time, Madam Chairperson. Happiest of birthdays. With respect to the tax revenue, I just want to pause there because that second dot is critically important, especially for the newer board members. I just want to explain, flat state funding is incorporated in our budget at this time because the governor, this is his second year, he has until March to present his budget or February thirtieth to present his budget. So we'll know more in February on the state budget. But let's back up to last year and what happened. If you remember, the legislators did not approve a budget by June thirtieth. They proposed for Allentown School District twenty million dollars of what's called level-up money. Level-up money is essentially trying to balance all the school districts in the state and give them equity in funding from the state. So the, maybe the districts in the eastern part of state was, were getting more money, but the district like us needed more money, so they were funding some districts more than others. Allentown was earmarked to get twenty million dollars because our enrollment, our ADMs, average daily membership went down last year. And it's formula-driven. Our wealth, if you will, our ratio of economic conditions increased slightly. That twenty million dollars turned into fourteen million dollars. But still, the legislators didn't pass that budget. When they finally did, they removed all level-up money. So we didn't receive the fourteen million dollars that we had hoped for. Fortunately, we didn't incorporate that money in the budget because we basically don't put the money in until we're pretty confident that it would be there. So hopefully, the state has additional level-up money this year. But again, we won't know that until, until the spring of two thousand and twenty-four. ESRS, as Dr. Burks mentioned, we've received well over a hundred million dollars of ESRS money over the past two years. In the two thousand and twenty-four budget, we'll be receiving two million dollars. And as Dr. Burks said, we have to use that by September of two thousand and twenty-four. This is just a snapshot pie chart of where our revenues come from. Largest piece, obviously, about sixty-four percent from the state. Local revenue, it's real estate taxes, earned income taxes, delinquent taxes, interest, about thirty, thirty-one percent, and federal revenue, our title funds, about five percent of our budget. Real estate tax revenues, current and delinquent. We received, we projected, we're projecting that for the twenty, this current school year, we'll receive about a hundred and four million dollars. We're not projecting a tax increase at this time because, quite frankly, we haven't done the expenditure portion of the budget. So we're, we're projecting about a hundred and five million dollars for real estate tax revenue. Act Five-eleven, those taxes are, they're called Act Five-eleven taxes. They're essentially our earned income taxes. And that's projected to be about sixteen million dollars. We're, we're experiencing, we've been experiencing some growth over the past few years in earning income. And then all our, all our other local, at this time, we're projecting a significant increase there mainly due to interest rates. Everybody's aware that interest rates have been climbing. And, you know, unfortunately, mortgage rates, interest rates on cars, loans, those are escalating. But the interest that we make on our invested funds are increasing too. So we, we expect that, we hope to see that continue. Basic ed funding, we received a hundred and eighty-seven million dollars last year. Again, as mentioned, we won't know what that number is until, until the spring. Our FICA, we receive, that's the FICA reimbursement, we receive about seventy, seventy-seven percent reimbursement from the state. That's the taxes we pay on our employees. Special ed funding, about sixteen million dollars that we receive every year. Our transportation subsidy, we have a new transportation director. We've seen the fruits of his labors already. We're expecting some growth in our transportation subsidy by, by several hundred thousand dollars. Again, our pension, that's the contribution. We make double that payment to the state, and the state reimburses us half of what we pay them, a little bit more than half. And then all other state revenues, approximately thirty million dollars. Yes.
The transportation stuff.
Yep.
How much do we pay?
Oh, our transportation budget is in here? Our transportation is, if I remember correctly, eight, ten million dollars?
Eight dollars.
Yeah.
You need to understand, you know, we're paying.
Oh, yeah, pennies on dollar.
So that's why I want us to understand, we come to get our new transportation, because our transportation for students contract is up. We need to get our ten million dollars worth. But that's not enough.
What drives the budget? Obviously, salary and benefits, salary and benefits account for about sixty percent of our budget in, in most districts, and that number is about seventy percent. The only reason that's not similar in Allentown School District is because our charter school tuition is, is so high. We're projected to spend seventy million dollars, seventy million dollars next year in charter school tuition.
Who presented that? It's not much.
Eighteen. Debt service has been fairly stable over the years, and that's at six percent, and all other expenses. You, maintenance cost, transportation is in that other expenses, so about sixteen percent. So this is, you know, a historical look at three indexes. The first is the Act One Index. That's the cap on, on how much Allentown School District could raise taxes over the year. And you can see that over that period of time, the average was three point six two. For our taxpayers, you know, we did a better job. You know, we raised taxes a little less than two percent on average. And we like to use this index, Social Security Consumer Price Index. That's the increase that Social Security recipients, that's based on inflationary factors, have received over the years in their, what they received from the federal government for Social Security. Like those slides? So that's a, that's a blank slide.
There's no more slides.
Oh, okay. I, what I, what I had thought was, there was another caption of the timeline again. So this is just, as Dr. Burks alluded to earlier, this is the, the first of many presentations that you'll see. This was, as, as we go through the months through June, you will start to refine the budget and, and present more concrete numbers. You, we hope that you adopt the budget, the preliminary budget in May. And we're hoping that in the committee of the whole meeting, a special meeting would be called to adopt the budget in June. But there's a lot of work to be done between now and then. There was a discussion earlier about, this is, this is early. Actually, the administration has started the budget process in, in September. So we've been at this for the past couple of months, and you will continue to, to work on the budget for the next several.
So the, I have a question. So the, the twenty million dollars that we did receive from the state.
That we didn't receive from the state.
We didn't?
No.
Was that the thirty-four? Because it was twenty, and then you said fourteen, so that comes to thirty-four. Is that the thirty-four that everybody was happy about?
No, we, we were, it was, we were earmarked to receive twenty. And then because of our
Is this that number? I'm just, is that the, that number, once they give us money, then they can't never go lower?
Correct, correct. So if they had given us that.
So we didn't get nothing?
So if we, well, we got a hundred and eighty-six million, but if we had received the fourteen million, you it would have been built into that, so we would have received two hundred million dollars from the state. And then we would, that would have been stable. They never would have been able to take that away from us.
So when everybody was doing a commercial for thirty-four million, I'm just trying to get an understanding.
I don't, I don't recall the thirty.
I shouldn't say commercial. I'm just in my head. Pardon me. So there was a time that we were waiting for the state, and then everybody was celebrating. It was a thirty
Four million.
Thirty-four million, right? So that number that everybody was happy about, we never actually got it?
It's about two years ago. The twenty-one, twenty-two.
Two years ago?
Twenty-one, twenty-two.
I apologize.
Chair, so we understand.
Yeah, I, I guess that was maybe before my time, so.
Yes.
Yeah.
The thirty-four million.
So I know there's several times that I've been in this board when we talk about funding. So there was a time when Harry, Jen, you know what I'm talking about, right? Okay, so let's talk about it. Harry and I and you, we met every Wednesday at three-thirty, right, to talk about, so that I can get an understanding of the finances. We were waiting for our representatives in Harrisburg to give us the good news. Because I think at one time it was like, maybe we'll get nine million. But if we get twelve million, that'd be wonderful. But then we heard we were gonna get thirty-four million. Did we ever get that?
So it's my, it's my understanding we got that, and that was a part of the twenty-two, twenty-three budget last year's, I'm sorry. Twenty-two, twenty-three budget. That was a part of last year's budget. So this year's budget, what Mr. Fazio just said, was we didn't get what?
But I thought that was a number that we will get forever.
We, we did get that number again.
Yeah. Okay, I understand.
We're supposed to get more than that.
Thirty-four, we, our state revenues increased in twenty-two, twenty-three by thirty-four million dollars. That money stays in there, so we received that thirty-four million dollars again last year. And we'll get that thirty-four million dollars again this year.
That's what I wanted to know. Okay, so I was adding twenty and fourteen is thirty-four, so I wanted, I was, thought I was hearing that we weren't getting, that was gone.
Yeah.
She has clarity about now level up.
Yeah.
So if you can explain level up.
Yeah.
That we didn't receive that.
Yeah. So what we didn't receive last year, that thirty-four million dollars that we received the prior year, we were gonna get another twenty million dollars on top of that.
That was level-up funds, and that was. That was level up funds and that was what you guys did that big, um, conference. Yeah, about, okay.
But we didn't get that.
Thank you.
So, we need to have a conference and say, we didn't get it.
Well.
No one got it.
No one got it.
So, that's finance. We're, I'm here for policy as well.
Well, let's get to the. Well, hold on, we have to, uh, uh, for, um, public comments on non-agenda items. At this time, we're taking comments for non-agenda items. And again, once, uh, once recognized, please come to the podium, state your name, address and for the record. And kindly limit your remarks to three minutes. Are there any non-agenda items?
Leland Frazier.
Uh, good evening, Leland Frazier. I live over on North Third Street, Bloxbury. I'm currently the volunteer coach for Deerfield High School's first ever winter soccer program. My grandson's over at Union Terrace. And I'm here, uh, because I started volunteering at Deerfield this fall as assistant coach. And, uh, our sports teams maybe had some disadvantages to other schools, if you will. And as I've been volunteering in more things, I realized it seems to be, or possibly, that there's a, a hole. In, um, how we communicate from parent volunteers, students participating extracurricular activities. And the school district. I also work in the, uh, seventy-twenty-one program and I go to elementary schools and do soccer clinics. And when I'm there, we have fifty percent of kids want to join a team. Parents say, yeah, I'll help. But there's nothing past that to actually facilitate, uh, a parent going through the, the process. Of getting all their clearances, which can be intimidating. You have to get background checks, it's not difficult, but there's a, a palpable pause. And, um, I'm here to see if there's any way the school district can create a position in the school district. That would solely be responsible for actually going to schools, talking to kids, saying, hey, let's join an extracurricular activity. Let's do something, whether it's band, whether it's a play. There's no one actually out there trying to promote that, if you will, as a job, if you will. And then also, we, we do need to do a better job of getting parents through the process of helping out. All right, just quick story. Uh, when the season ended, Deerfield is the only high school, I believe, anywhere that doesn't have any sort of winter soccer program. I called the winter league, I said, what do we need you to get that started? They said, you need to pay the league fees, it's thirteen hundred dollars, two hundred dollars for refs, you need three grand by next week. I said, done, we'll do it. The coach, I'm sorry, the, uh, captain of our city team, he and I went out to local businesses. And in five days, we raised three thousand seven hundred dollars. We now have two teams in the winter league. I am here to tell you that every single business I walked into, we just didn't walk door to door, walked in and said, hey, Deerfield Soccer needs help, will you help? Every business said, we would love to help. What can we do? Some gave us twenty dollars, some gave us like literally five dollars. But we raised the money in a week. And I'm just here because I believe there's a tremendous opportunity for more interaction between the community and the school and the kids. And we're actually having a thank you dinner for all the businesses that donated, so they can meet the players. And every single business owner said, I wanna meet them. Like, and I, and I just, I wanted my three minutes to say that if there's anything you guys can do to figure out some way of getting. Kids more motivated to join something and the parents more motivated to, you know, to help them do that. I, I think it would be better for everyone. That was it, thanks.
Thank you.
Sir, quick question, where is the thank you?
Uh, Manju Restaurant, November, I'm sorry, December nineteenth. It's at, uh, six to seven PM and everyone's invited. But you gotta pay fifteen dollars, cause the business owners aren't paying anything. Cause they already donated everything, so all of our, all of our pair, players are paying for the dinner. So.
All our players are paying for the dinner?
Absolutely.
And how much you sell those fifteen dollars?
Fifteen dollars, yeah, and they get to play the whole winter season for free. And, uh.
It's need sponsorship? Like they can't afford the dinner? Are you coming up against them?
Not at all. In fact, uh, some of the parents ask so they could help in some way, shape or form. You know, in my experience, I've been coaching for a long time. But my experience is, is you ask, I think the, the small things, like fifteen dollars is, is not a big thing to play soccer for free for three months, you know? So.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Okay, so, I had a whole lot of thoughts. I'm wanting to know, am I hearing that there's an issue at that level, that building level? Where it appears that there's no support at the building level to be able to. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's one data point that we heard and one incident.
Oh, I understand that part, but the reason why I said that and, and, and I know that, um. Cause I get a feel, we're gonna have to talk about this amongst ourselves, but since we are talking about it now. Um, maybe we can get it so that, um. Because if we have the community that's crying out, saying like, look, we wanna invest, then we have to make sure that there's not bodies. I'm not talking about you personally, Dr. Burke, I'm real transparent. Um, I know that there's some people that's forcing it, some people that's against us. You know, and so, I, and just so that the public know, you might be feeling it at that level. And up at this level, clearly you can see that we wanna make sure if there's anything that's given to our kids, we wanna make sure that they're receiving it. And so, and we don't have to create a whole nother job for that. Obviously, we must be paying somebody, somewhere, to make sure that that's done. And so, that's why I'm having this conversation, because I don't know about you, again, congratulations. But two thousand seventeen, I've been on this board and there's been a lot of business owners and people who say they want to. They're here for our kids and there's too many blockers. You know, and so I'm just calling it as a seed. It's like, for me, it's like bowling, we're gonna knock them pins down. So, I thank you for coming today and we're gonna do what we can to ensure, cause we're all in this together, but those that are not for us, they gotta go. You know, this is not the first time that I've heard that. So, I'm not putting it on you, I'm saying it publicly, that I know that people are against our kids. And it's making it look like it's you, but whoever it is, we're gonna figure it out. Because our kids deserve the best. And I thank you for being that person to come, I can't thank you enough.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want for clarity, the board approved an organizational chart that includes. An officer, uh, chief of family and community engagement, who that person will begin soon. So, I, we do, I'm sure we have opportunities to shore up some of our practices. We also have a position of director of family and community engagement that is not filled, that we're looking to, um, for a successful candidate. We have school counselors, we have teachers, we have coaches, we have just recently hired a director of wellness. With his direct responsibilities is to oversee, one of his direct responsibilities is to oversee athletics. So, is, are, uh, are there opportunities for group? Absolutely, but we're not in a position to create any new, new roles in this organization.
I also wanna mention that there are community and school coordinators as well. Um, that should be working in tandem with whatever program is in the school and the students to make sure that they're being signed up. Whatever needs that they need, that need to be met, that they're communicating with community partners to fill those needs as well. So, I would definitely try to get in contact with the community and schools coordinator as well. You have something to say? Oh, you're saying yes? Okay, yes.
Um, Madam President and board members, I just wanna make sure with all these positions that, that we, these supports that we have in place. That these people, we don't wanna micromanage anybody, but I'm, I'm, I'm at the point where I wanna actually go knock on the door and see who's opening, opening it. You know, because this is what's happening. You know, we have a lot of things in place and it's almost like, um, it's like this water bottle, you know? You poke a hole in here, you plug this one up and then somebody pokes another hole there. And what happened is we have to stop the bleed, because we're not the same district we were in two thousand seventeen. Okay, we have, we have a long way to go, but we've come very far. But I'm just feeling like, I'm, I'm not even feeling, I know it. You know, we've had too many people come through and say, this is what, like, wow, definitely, we've been trying to sow seed into Allentown for a long time. This is where we live, we grew up here. People who are not here, they want, you know, they wanna give. But for some reason, there's always somebody that's being blocked. Sometimes I almost feel like people's, people who work here are being bullied. And it's almost like if I go against the grain, then I'm gonna have issues. And this is how I feel, I can't call no name, but I know that this is happening in this district. And I'm, again, um, we gotta do better and we are gonna do better. But we have to, maybe we need to do like they, like the state does, send some people around who go and shop. You never know who you're talking to. You understand secret shoppers, right? And so, you know, maybe we gotta do out, we don't have to pay two hundred thousand dollars for somebody to investigate. You know, maybe we need to start coming together and figuring out and doing it on our own. But our kids are gonna get what it is they're supposed to have.
I'm sorry, um, yeah, just, uh, just listening to what you're saying. Uh, we need to figure out how to hold people accountable for their roles. And I love when I hear parents who are actually involved, especially someone mentioning that there's a group of parents. Because once you have that movement, you need to jump right on it. Because what happens is if they don't have the support that they need, it dies down. And to build that back up, it's not that easy. So, once we have that going, that momentum, we have to jump on it and support it. And, and I think that we should all here come together and figure how we can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And just for clarity, some of the roles that I mentioned, those individuals just started last week. And I agree, there was a, a dearth in that area in terms of people responsible. And one person starts next week, the chief of family. So, yes, do we need to shore up some of our practices, but we are trying to address them. And if there's someone who would like to, a parent, anyone who wants to write a check, you can please, my email address is Burke C. At Allentown S D dot org, so I'd be happy to take your money. I also have a parent advisory council. We have opportunities for families in the community to engage in our strategic planning process. So, if you want to engage, we welcome you.
Thank you. Any old business?
We still have some comments.
Oh, we still have comments? Sorry.
That's okay, Patrick Palmer.
Sorry, Patrick.
Patrick Palmer, um, Allen Street, Allentown. First off, someone's glasses are up here and it's been. All those years. And, um, I just wanted to, I had a few questions, comments, complaints. First off, um, when I walk in here, I see the, uh, wall of fame out there. And, um, hello, Dr. Burke, I don't see Dr. Burke's on the wall of fame. Um, I'm wondering why her picture isn't up there yet. She's been here more than enough time and, uh, it's kind of weird to me that that's not up there. But I'm just observing as a taxpaying citizen, that's all. Another one, I, um, so I've been watching these for years. And, uh, as I was talking to Ms. Pollock over there, I just met her today. And, um, she was, uh, I was talking about the fact that, um, we don't have the ability like the other districts around us. Of being able to send comments in, so they can at least be read out loud, um, for some concerned citizens who aren't able to be here longer. As well as, um, some of, uh, myself included and my Spanish-speaking brethren. Uh, we aren't able to listen to this in Spanish and I would like to be able to do that. Um, so, cause I've been listening to this for years, this is my first time in this building. Um, but, uh, so I would like to be able to go ahead and start doing that. And, um, also congratulations to, um, everyone that's joined. Sorry, I, uh, missed all of you getting sworn in and Judge Johnson, who was here. But, um, I'm happy for, uh, you know, being able to see you guys and hoping for the best coming next year. As well as, um, I was just letting you guys know, I don't know if you guys know, but I've dealt with school boards before. And, um, if you guys were looking for any kind of assistance or anything like that, I can give you guys my card. Uh, just in case you guys were looking for that. And, um, you know, I'm always here to assist, um, as well as if you guys were looking for any kind of outside engagement. Um, I've been, uh, I've done that for a few years myself, including the last two years, there's been a lot of it. I don't know if you guys know, I was really out in the community for the last couple of years, helping out. But, um, I'm here for you guys, um, if there's anything you guys need, uh, feel free to reach out, I have my cards here. Um, ignore the logo on them, it might look familiar, but.
Thank you, sir.
And, uh, I, I yield my time, thank you. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Pass it down to the new one.
So, thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
Ruby Cruz.
Hello, my name is Ruby Cruz, I live on West Livingston Street. Um, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a few things that I wanna cover. One is the fact that I've been trying to reach out to everyone via email. With my concerns regarding my son being strangled at E E A C S by three male staff. Um, I tried to seek the help of the school board, um, Chief Officer Roca. Um, Allentown City members, city board members. Um, the Department of Education. And I found out that these people that work at E E A C F. Are not even teacher certified, so they can't even investigate. With that being said, maybe we should look into, uh, reconstruct, restructure. The charter school funding at the state level. And maybe that will help us financially, you know, with our schools in Allentown. Also, considering that nobody has tried to help me, I was forced to file a complaint with the Office of Civil Rights. To have them investigate, help me investigate that matter. Secondly, is, uh, recurring issue that I, I am experiencing with my daughter who's thirteen years old. Uh, she has an I E P. And, uh, I don't want to assume that people are intentionally ignoring. The issues with my daughter's I E P that contribute to her regression. Because I've also been emailing everyone for help and support for my daughter, because her mental health has declined severely. Um, so I'm concerned about the people that I'm trusting with my children. And how much do they care about children in our community, especially the minority? Cause, you know, the numbers don't lie, right? So, I just wanted to come here in person and say it loudly, so that everybody can hear me and get a chance to show the picture of my son. The way I picked him up from E E A C S one day. With strangulation marks on his neck, a bloody lip. A bruise under his chin and blood vessels popped all over his face and in his eye. And I don't know if it's a coincidence, but the director there, the CEO is a retired police detective. Investigate.
No one else? No more comments? Any new bus, any old business? Any new business? I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a second.
So move.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the, uh, finance is adjourned. So, now we're gonna go into the policy, uh, committee in a whole. I'd like to call to order a policy committee of the whole meeting of the board of directors of today's school district for the city of Allentown for today. December seventh, two thousand twenty-three. The board welcomes and invites public comment. You may address the board on agenda and non-agenda items. The first opportunity for comment is at the beginning of the meeting and limited to agenda items only. Comment cards must be received by, by the start of the meeting, which is now. We will not be receiving public cards once the meeting begins. A copy of the public comment policies located on the table next to the comment card. Per our board's policy, any person may address. Per our board's policy, any person may address the board and in accordance with the procedures and limitation of the policy, either on issues presented and resolution being considered or on the other members of affecting the administration management or operation of the district. Remarks, remarks of a personal nature directed against any individual not will be ruled out of order. Okay, if you choose to address the board, please fill out a comment card and hand it to the board secretary. Mr. Simonson, any cards? All right. Fazio?
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. Recently, the policy committee met uh, to review six policies that were presented to the committee uh, by the administration. These policies were a result of, as Dr. Burks alluded to earlier, uh, a recent uh, monitoring audit uh, by, as a result of the ESER funds that we received over the past two years. Um, and um, monitors from um, from the state federal government came um, and reviewed our procedures on how those uh, funds were spent, but also if we had the proper policies in place. And they identified six policies um, that we didn't have. It doesn't say that we weren't um, adhering to the policies. Um, they were just referencing the fact that we didn't have the policies in place. So we worked with uh, P S B A, the Pennsylvania Association of School, uh, Pennsylvania Association of uh, Penn, Pennsylvania Association of School Boards, um, P S B A. And um, uh, we received uh, copies of those fa, policies as um, as developed by them. Uh, you have them in your packet, uh, some are lengthy. Uh, the policy committee is recommending uh, five of the six to the board. Uh, the uh, the, one of the six uh, the policy committee is recommending that we table uh, because there were several questions raised at, at the committee level. Uh, the first policy, policy six twenty-two, um, I'll summarize. Um, it's a policy that ensures, it's policy six twenty-two, Gatsby Statement thirty-four. This policy ensures compliance with state requirements and to properly account for both the financial and economic resources of the district. Requires that the district maintain a fixed asset inventory and depreciation schedules. Requires that the business manager or CFO prepare a management discussion and analysis report on a yearly basis. We do that, but again, we didn't have the policy telling us that we, that, that, uh, on file. Policy six twenty-two, federal fiscal compliance. This policy requires that Allentown School District ensures that all federal funds are administered in accordance with federal requirements. Requires that the district's financial management system be designed with strong internal controls, a high level of transparency and accountability and documented procedures to ensure that all fiscal management standards are met. Policy number three, six twenty-six point one, travel reimbursement, federal program. We have several travel reimbursement policies, but not specifically one for federal programs. Those are the monies again that they were reviewing, auditing, um, the ESERS monies. This policy requires that all district employees comply with established school board policies for travel reimbursement. It also ensures that all district travel related to federal programs are documented, justified, reasonable, and necessary. Fourth policy, policy eight hundred, records management. This policy requires that Allentown School District maintain permanent records of board minutes, annual audit reports, and annual financial reports. It also requires that all financial records, such as purchase orders, invoices, contracts, receipts be kept for at least six years.
I have a question on that one. Do we stop now and ask questions later?
Go ahead.
I can ask questions. Okay, so for best practice, it's normally seven years. Why do we choose six years?
An excellent question. The board i- is at the liberty of changing any of these policies. If the board desires seven years, the board has that. This is a recommendation by, by P S B A and only a recommendation.
I recommend that we go by best practice. Okay. Thank you.
I'll note that. Thank you.
Make sure we put that in there.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
Policy eight twenty-eight, fraud. This policy requires that all board members, district employees, volunteers, consultants, vendors, contractors, maintain a relationship with the Allentown School District of integrity. And again, uh, we, we tabled policy eight twenty-seven.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any questions from the board?
For policy, um, six two six, P S B A policy, no, the six hundred? I think it's six hundred. Federal fiscal compliance?
That's two, six two six.
Yeah, six two six. So it, it says, um, shall establish and maintain a sound financial management system to include in, internal controls. Will the board be notified of like, the management system or is it something that, those are one of the ones that we already have in place?
Um, we're uh, we have a, 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 a management system, but we'll be reviewing um, the guidelines within this policy to ensure that our system adheres to the policies.
Okay, and once that's done, will that come back in front of the board?
Of course. I'll note that as well.
Okay, uh, superintendent remarks.
Uh, just Madam Chair, is it okay if Mr. Fazio just explains, because we do have some new school board directors, like what happens next?
Right, exactly.
We gave you the policies, and so can you now say what happens next after this?
This is the first reading of the policy. Um, at the December fourteenth meeting, uh, the policies are brought before a, a vote uh, by the uh, by the members of the school board. They'll look for your review over these next, um, next few weeks.
Okay, so you will be getting a copy of the policies.
So you can review it.
Then again, if, if any board member has uh, specific questions, please don't hesitate to reach out.
All right. At this time, we're taking public comments on agenda items.
We need a motion.
Oh, oh, the motion. Sorry. Uh, may I have a motion to pick this forward to the December fourteenth meeting?
So move.
I second.
Any discussion? Seeing, hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion carried. It will be December fourteenth meeting. Okay, um. At this time, we're taking public comments on agenda items.
No comments.
Okay. All righty, um, on, on non-agenda items.
No comments.
All right then. Any old business? Any new business? Here, my, none? May I have a, uh, I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Can I have a second?
My second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the meeting is adjourned to education.
Good evening, all. This is our last meeting of the evening. Is that correct?
Correct.
We have one item. So I'd like to call the order, the education committee of the whole for the board of directors for the school district for the, the city of Allentown for today, December seventh, two thousand twenty-three. I want to say that the board continues to welcome and invite public comments. You may address the board on agenda and or non-agenda items. The first opportunity for comment is at the beginning of the meeting and is limited to agenda items only. Comment cards must be received by the start of the meeting, which is now. We will now be receiving public cards once, we will not be receiving public comment cards once the agenda, the meeting has started. A copy of the public comment policy is located on the table next to the comment cards. And as you know from our previous uh, meetings, I don't have to read this, you know, same rules. So um, at this time, uh, Dr. Burks, do you have any comment, any remarks?
Yes, I'll make them brief. Thank you, Madam Chair. Earlier this year, we presented our continuous assessment plan goals uh, to the school board directors and to the public. And we made a commitment that we are going to present those data as, on a quarterly basis to inform the public as well as the school board of directors where we are as relates to our progress. Once though that presentation was presented to me, and I just want to, for the record, because we want to be very transparent about what we say that we're going to do. Um, I didn't feel, I felt that the public and the board needed a deeper analysis and, and that the presentation did not represent what we said. So I was, I sent it back to our team so that there can be a comparative analysis of where we are as an organization. So we will present that presentation in January, at the next January eleventh.
Thank you very much, Dr. Burks. At this time, we'll be taking uh, public comments on agenda items only. Do you have any? You do not have any? Um. Again, we have that one agenda item and it's um, the M O U with the Allentown Education Association, which supporting our teachers in gaining their certification, certifications in special education. Um, we'll be presenting, Mr. Singh? Thank you.
Good evening, school board. We're requesting the board's approval for the PACE M O U. That's stands for Pennsylvania Accelerated Certification for Educators. And we're asking for this M O U to pass for the reimbursement of Allentown School District teachers currently enrolled in the PACE program as they complete their special education masters and teacher certification. This memorandum of understanding is meant to assist and support the eight current employees that are presently enrolled in the Pennsylvania Accelerated Certification for Educators Program pursuing the acro, acquisition of a special ed master's degree and special education teacher certification. The M O U will allow the district to incentivize emergency certified teachers employed by the district to obtain their K to twelve special education certification and remain employed by the district as a result of the one hundred percent tuition reimbursement to those emergency certified teachers currently enrolled in the Lehigh University's PACE program. This initiative will help our district fill historically hard to fill special ed vacancies and increase the amount of qualified and fully certified educators that work in A S D. It will also increase the diversity of our teacher workforce and decrease the amount of teacher vacancies.
Thank you, Mr. Singh. May I have a motion to move this M O U to our next regular board meeting, which is next week?
Make that motion?
I second.
Thank you so much. Is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none? All in favor, please let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any that oppose? Hearing and seeing none, this moves forward to our next regular um, board meeting, which is next week.
Thank you.
Um, at this time, we're taking comments on non-agenda items. We don't have any. This is a good thing, so that means we're getting ready to go home. Um, is there any old business to come before this board, which we are very interested in if you have? Hearing and seeing none, um, there's no old business, um, any new business? Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So move.
Is there a second? Does anybody want to talk about it? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Have a good night.